Good evening, welcome to the November 12th, 2018 Organizational Commission Meeting. This is the annual organizational meeting of the Marquette City Commission and in accordance with the City Charter, Section 2.2, the City Clerk is to preside over the proceedings throughout the point when the Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem are elected, at which point the new Mayor will preside over the remainder of the meeting. With that, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, we'll proceed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I'll now take the roll call of the sitting Commissioners. Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Plored.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Campana.
Here. If you please, at this point, I'd like to have Commissioner Plored say a few words at the podium to my right, please. Commissioner Plored, we appreciate all that you've done for the city for the last three years. Until you've been a Commissioner, you really don't realize how much work, time, and effort goes into doing what we do. It's not a full-time job, but it's on your mind 24 hours, 24/7. So, you've worked hard, you've represented us well, and we're pleased you're able to serve with us. We're, you know, sorry to see you go, but we do appreciate what you've done for us and for the city of Marquette. We'd like to present you with this certificate of appreciation. It's a thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to everybody I got a chance to work with, everybody I got a chance to meet, and let you know that the city really is in very, very good hands. We have some awesome people working for the city, very professional, and really, really do want to do a good job at what they do. They're very good at that. So, everybody that had a hand in, or anybody that I met as a City Commissioner, thank you so much for being a part of what I got a chance to do here, and I really did have a good time. So, best of luck. Thank you.
With that, if the two newly-elected Commissioners would join me at the far lectern, I'll administer your oath. States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Marquette, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Marquette City Commission of the City of Marquette according to the best of my ability. Thank you. We'll now conduct the election for Mayor. If you would pick up the gold ballot, please remember that you have to sign the back of your ballot according to OMA. Commissioner, if you could join me at the lectern, I'll administer your oath.
I, Frederick Stonehouse, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Marquette, and that I will do faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Mayor of the City of Marquette according to the best of my ability.
We will have to vote again. It's three and three for Commissioners Campana and Reynolds, so please vote again. Schlegel.
Schlegel.
Oh, Smith, sorry.
Smith.
And we vote again, same vote, three for Campana, three for Commissioner Reynolds, and On the third ballot, congratulations, Commissioner Reynolds, Mayor Pro Tem, if you'd step to the lectern, I'll administer your oath.
I, Sarah Reynolds, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Marquette, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Marquette to the best of my ability.
I'll now take the role of the seated Commissioner. Commissioner Campana.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Stonehouse.
Next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. I need a motion for approval. Commissioner Schlegel, I have a motion, second motion. Commissioner Frazier. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I have no announcements, but we do have public comments.
Any member of the public may address the Commission at this point. You have three minutes, and the Clerk will be timing it. Any member of the public that wishes to address the Commission?
Hi, folks. Congratulations on the, I'm sorry, I'll start this fresh. My name's Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in the city of Marquette. As somebody who was on the ballot and got kicked off in the first round during the primaries, I want to extend a warm welcome to Ms. Hill. Congratulations, Ms. Smith, welcome back. I am honored. I'm actually really honored, and I think this goes understated as a whole, but this year's election process was historic in many ways, and we, as a city, were no different. I'd like to have the fact-checkers do this, but I don't ever recall ever seeing so many women on the ballot, let alone so many women elected. This is the first year, I think, that we've only elected women, so by all means, no offense to you ladies who are on the end, but I'd like to see you both in the center again. I mean, you guys look like you're marginalized, like we put the women off to the side. There was only one other time that the Commission did not seat women on the end, and that was when Ms. Reynolds was the Pro Tem, so I encourage you to come back to the center. On those notes, though, looking forward, you're going to have a lot to do. Mr. Frazier, the last time I was up here, you told me, or you said that you didn't understand what the role was for the City Commissioners in regards to the power plant. Since we just changed the Charter to allow the Marquette Board of Light and Power to be charged based on how much electricity they sell and a different rating of how they own things, my comments to you have always been that within the Charter, we are, as citizens, you as well, as a city government, are mandatory, we're required to get our electricity from the Board of Light and Power as part of the mandate in the Charter. Since it doesn't have to deal with taxes and revenue coming in, you, as a city government, could change that line of the Charter to allow for more competitive access to our market. Right now, Board of Light and Power has acknowledged that they buy most of the electricity right now, and as a matter of fact, we are buying electricity off the grid. Off the grid means from We Energies. So, I just had a discussion with DTE and Consumer Energies Downstate for another project that I'm working on, but basically what they pointed out is Downstate allows competitive bidding on electric contracts, just like you would a Charter, or a cable network, or a gas, and waste management. So, let's open that up, and instead of seeing that power plant go to waste, there might be somebody like Upco, like Consumer Energies, like DTE, who would be a part of our community. And I'd like to see more industry come to our community, and if you could do that as a Charter revision, that'd be great.
Thank you. Anyone else, excuse me, anyone else desiring to address the Commission? Anyone else? Hearing none? That portion is closed.
So, I'll make it quick. I'm Amber Neely, 910 Grant Avenue, and congratulations to the newly-appointed. I am just going to give you a quick update on what's going on at my place at 910 Grant Avenue. Some of you are familiar with my various parts of my story developing my property there, and most recently, I've had a new waterline run that connects my new curb stop to the next closest water main, which is on Lincoln Avenue at 401 Lincoln. My neighbors were gracious to uphold a vague easement that I was able to find by searching through the old handwritten log at the Register of Deeds. It was something that, when I bought the place, I was assured by my realtor that the easement was good, and it was forever. However, in July, after my place was struck by lightning, I heard from Public Works a few days later, apparently, my old waterline was leaking and bubbling up under their garage. So, since then, I've had this waterline replaced, and it runs across my neighbor's property, and perhaps somewhat in the right-of-way, which is Grant Ave., which is the road that I live on, which is unpaved and quote-unquote "unimproved." And that's kind of my point here, is the unimproved part. A few days after speaking with Public Works, and they said, "You're not going to be able to use your waterline anymore, it's broken." It seemed to me that it was a result of the firefighting, actually, of fighting this very unfortunate structure fire. I spoke with the Engineering Department a few days after that, and they suggested that the city's manager's office might need to file a claim with the MML, the Michigan Municipalities League. Mrs. Larson assured me that, no, that wasn't the case, and Mr. Angeli pointed out a very small piece of fine print in the code that reads something along the lines of, if your easement runs across your neighbor's property, if your utility runs across a property that is not owned by the city, then basically, it's the responsibility of the person exercising control over that line, is basically the gist of it. So, I proceeded forward. I mentioned this unimproved clause thing, which is something that the city, over the years, has referred to my property as unimproved, as being the reason why my road isn't paved, the reason why the city doesn't plow it, doesn't maintain it. They call it unimproved, and I have been asking now for years where it says that, and where it is in writing that my place is so-called unimproved, and I would appeal to the Commission that it is now improved, now that I have put in a brand-new septic system, a brand-new waterline, vastly improved Grant Avenue by widening it. There really shouldn't be any problem with a plow plowing the street like any other city dweller's street, and I would like some proof that my property is this unimproved category.
I must ask you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to address the Commission? Hearing none? This portion of the agenda is closed. That brings us to the consent agenda. Commissioners, I need a motion. Commissioner Frazier makes the motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Reynolds? I didn't hear what he said. Commissioner Fr-? Yes. He has to make a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, as written.
Okay. Thank you. I have a second from Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Further discussion?
None.
Hearing none? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six or seven to zero. That brings us down to new business. We have the, I think, Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll get the hang of this here.
This one's a little different. There is no recommendation, it is strictly to approve the 2019 City Commission meeting schedule.
And there is no physical effect?
Just next year's business.
Commissioners, we have, we have an item in front of us, I need a, I need a motion to.
I move that-
Commissioner Smith?
Sorry. I move that we accept the 2019 City Commission meeting schedule as presented.
I have a second. Commissioner Hill?
I second the motion.
I have a motion, I have a second. Do I have any further discussion?
Yep.
Commissioner Smith?
Just to note that on the second meeting in March, I won't be able to attend, so that's an issue for anyone else, it's better to get it out now. I know last year around that time, we had an issue with almost not having a quorum, so I just wanted to throw it out there. I think it's March 25th, I will not be available.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. We have seven to zero pass. Brings us to public comments again. This time, I'll do it correctly. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and your physical address when making public comments.
1406, Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in Marquette. I figured, since we're all here, might as well say something. And please don't take this as a personal attack, because that seemed like the way we were going in the last session was that any time a criticism came up with a name, it was considered a personal attack on somebody. I'd just like to say, Mr. Stonehouse, you have a very deep voice, and unless it's covered on the microphone and you can hear it in your own speakers, we don't have any record of what you were saying. So, just keep that in mind, please, it's not a criticism about you, any take there, it's just you have a tendency not to have your comments recorded, and now that you're Mayor, it'd be helpful if we can see the transcripts on the bottom of the page. So, in that sense, I'd like to suggest that now winter is coming. We have a big city here, we've had some discussion about how the snowplows are going to work People, I encourage you to sit in the passenger-side seat of a car when you go out to dinner on Third Street. Please tell me if it's easier to get out of the street, or out of the car, or if we, as a city, could address that, I guess. Thank you for your time, and good luck this year.
Thank you. Commissioners, we are now, anyone else desiring public comment?
If anyone has.
You may.
Again, Amber Neely, 910 Grant Avenue. So, I have the issue where I don't even have a plow that goes on my street, even though I'm right in the middle of town here, adjacent to Lincoln Avenue. Grant Avenue actually connects to Lincoln Avenue, and since it has this unimproved label on it, which I've only ever heard when the city is talking to me, or emailing to me, and telling me why it is not their problem, why they have to do things like maintain my road, or provide me with a working waterline. So, that's what I have to say about the plowing, basically, is please plow Grant Avenue, please make Grant Avenue no longer unimproved. I spoke with somebody at the Treasurer's Department, a clerk there who has been there for 32 years, and she said that she had never heard of that, never heard of a property being quote-unquote "unimproved." And I would argue that it is now improved, because I've spent four years im-